Okay, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. If everyone would stand please for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have a new city attorney, and I'm going to ask Jim Hitt, if he will, to introduce him to us.
Thank you. This is Michael Rodriguez. He came from, I believe, South Florida? Well, through Volusia. Through the Volusia County, but I'll let Michael give you a little bit of background, but he does have good extensive planning and comp plan information, so that's the part that I love. This is, you know, we've got some good back.
Very good. Welcome. Pleased to have you.
Well, it's been, it's a pleasure to be here. I've now been here a week. It's been a whirlwind week. But as Mr. Hitt said, yes, I come from, formerly an Assistant County Attorney with Volusia County. At Volusia County, I was actually counsel for the equivalent of the Planning Commission in Volusia. They're Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. Prior to that, I was in private practice doing numerous things, including representing developers before numerous cities in South Florida, which is where I've been in central Florida for four years now. Came up from South Florida. I also have governmental experience down in South Florida. I was an Assistant County Attorney in Martin County and served as an Assistant City Attorney for the City of Apopka, where I also served as their counsel for their Planning Commission, and the Town of Miami Lakes Planning and Zoning Board as well. So I do have, I've, my main focus has always been in land development, zoning, planning, comprehensive planning. So I look forward to serving this board as well as I've served all my other previous boards. And now, of course, I've got the top job as City Attorney, so I have other, other things on my plate as well. But this is, this is my bailiwick, so I'm looking forward to working with you.
Well, very good. Thank you. We will try to conduct ourselves so that keeping us in line is not too big of a challenge, but maybe challenging.
I'll try, I'll try my best. I've had, I've had honorary boards in the past.
Okay, thank you. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the meeting, a Planning Commission meeting held on April 14. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a proposal to approve them as submitted?
So moved.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Stanley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no.
No.
And that carries unanimously. We'll have a public comment period. There will be a public comment period for every item on the agenda, but if anyone has any general comments they want to make, now's the time to make them. I do have an intent to speak card for the public hearing from Dan Charlotte. Is he here? And if so, does he wish to speak? Not seeing them, maybe he just wanted to submit it for the record. I'm not sure. Our first item is a request to recommend approval of a text amendment to the City of Apopka Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Policy 3.1.1 commercial and recommend transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. And we have a staff presentation.
David Moon, Plan Manager, Community Development Department. This request comes to you from the Community Development Department, Division Planning and Zoning. There have been a few developers over time that have requested to develop assisted living facilities within the community. Some on the Planning Commission can remember an application that came through a number of years ago called the Cantorwood Development. We had difficulty squeezing that in within the density and intensity requirements that were set forth in the Conference of Plan. So other property owners or assisted living facility providers have indicated that they need a greater flora ratio to accommodate assisted living facilities, nursing facilities, as well as independent care facilities. So after a review of the Conference of Plan, the city planning staff looked at the commercial future land use designation within the future land use element of the Conference of Plan. You'll notice driving throughout central Florida, you'll see a number of assisted living facilities that are located on larger streets or within adjacent to commercial areas. Many of those will have a commercial land use zoning or future land use designation. Within our future land use element policy 3.1 dash I under commercial, under special exception uses that are allowed under the commercial land use designation, staff has proposed nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and independent living facilities to be consistent with a maximum intensity up to two-point flora ratio based on compatibility with the surrounding area, and they shall be the primary use and a standalone development. What that means is a, starting with the standalone development part, is that a assisted living facility cannot occur in conjunction on the same property with another commercial use. So you could not have it next to a restaurant or within a vertical mixed-use building with a commercial activity. It has to stand on its own and not be part of another development. Now, as a special exception, Planning Commission has the authority to make final decision. So through that process, with a flora ratio of up to two units per acre, you can make that determination of whether it's compatible with the character surrounding area. So if it's adjacent to a commercial development or if it's adjacent to a residential area, you'll be able to review that impact compatibility with the adjacent areas. The recommendation then is to find the proposed amendment consistent with the Conference of Plan and recommend transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. As a text amendment to the Conference of Plan is considered a large-scale future land use amendment, so we are required, if approved at the first term by city council, to transmit it to state agencies for their comments and review. I'll address any comments or questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I have, I have a question for the attorney. I currently work for the Agency for Healthcare Administration. We issue license and investigate nursing homes and assisted living. Should I remove myself from voting on this?
Without there, without you having any financial interest in the matter, this is simply a zoning regulatory matter. So the, the purview of your jurisdiction is different from the matter of whether they be properly located, since the agency does not regulate the placement of them. Usually, the agencies defer to the local governments to that. There really does not appear to be, there really wouldn't be a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Now, if you feel that you wish to recuse yourself, then you have that, that option, and you'll have to, you know, abide by the proper procedures for recusal. But whether there's a conflict of interest, you, you don't, you don't have an ownership or pecuniary interest in the matter, so there wouldn't be a facial conflict of interest.
Okay. I'm good with it. I'm good.
Okay, very good. Any other questions of staff?
No.
Okay, and since this is a proposal by the city, I assume there's no petitioner, and we'll close the petitions and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. We'll close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Chair.
Chair. Just want to point out, we did remove some language that was sent out to you, but it was a duplication. I neglected to mention that. Strictly in the language is that
Right.
section that says, "may be allowed as a special exception in a commercial land use category." We deleted that after discussion with, with Mike. That's basically repetitive because, one, it's already under the
Right.
special land use category,
Right.
and, two, it's already under the commercial
Right.
future land use designation. So, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Okay, again, back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the text amendment to the City of Apopka Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Policy 3.1.1 commercial and recommend transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stanley. Is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Guster. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the proposed rezoning master plan slash major development plan consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and Neighborhood Overlay District, and recommend approval of the rezoning of the subject parcels from Transitional T to Mixed Use Kelly Park Interchange MU-KPI, and assign the Neighborhood Overlay District and the Master Plan slash Major Development Plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibit subject to the applicant obtaining a Capacity Enhancement Agreement, CEA, from Orange County Public Schools prior to city council's second and final reading for the property owned by Quintero Holdings, LLC, and located at 3845 and 4011 Golden Jim Road. We'll proceed with the staff presentation.
Chairman, commission, this item is going to be rescheduled and re-advertised for the June 9 Planning Commission meeting. We met some, but not all of the advertising requirements, so we are going to reschedule it to June 9. The applicant has been notified of the new hearing schedule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
No, the previous item.
Huh?
The previous item. Now you're on item number
Okay, no, that's what I meant on the previous item. Okay, so now we're on item three, the request to find the PUD master plan amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and recommend approval of the amendment to the Mid-Florida Logistics Park Plan Unit Development Master Plan based on the conditions of approval and findings and facts presented in the staff report for the property owned by the Mid-Florida Freezer Warehouses, LTD, and Mid-Florida Logistics Park Property Owner Association, generally located on the west side of State Route 429, south of General Electric Road, and east of Herman, Hermit Smith Road. And staff presentation.
Thank you. This is a PUD zoning master plan that has appeared before the Planning Commission in the past, and it's been approved by city council based on the introduction of Amazon to the Apopka community. They're interested in acquiring and opening on Lot 3 of that Mid-Florida Freezer Logistics Park. However, to accommodate the size of their operation, they need to make amendments to the original master plan to, again, make Lot 3 larger, Lot 4 smaller. To do that, on approximately 189 acres, the, this is general location, south of General Electric Road and to the west of State Route 429 for the entire PUD, the primary changes, let's see if we can get the pointer, are going to occur Where's the switch? That's what I did, but it didn't work. Okay, well, I can go through it. There at the upper left-hand corner is where Lot 3 and to the south of it, Lot 4. And you can see basically on, there we go, on the design of the property, Lot 4 used to cover about right here, and Lot 3 was in this area. Now they've extended Lot 4 further to the south to accommodate the Amazon operation. So outlined in your report, as I mentioned, they're increasing Lot 3 and decreasing Lot 4, that required the transfer of some of the rights from Lot 3 and 4 amongst each other because, obviously, Lot 4 can't have as large a buildings as they previously could, and Lot 3 can now accommodate some of that. So they've also offered, and it'll be further discussed as part, possibly as part of development agreement, but to dedicate five feet of additional right-of-way to General Electric Road on the north side of Lot 3 to accommodate any future improvement to General Electric Road. However, to accommodate that additional right-of-way, they're asking for a reduction in the landscape buffer from 15 feet to 10 feet. So that's similar to a variance, but as a PUD, we set special design standards, so it becomes a deviation rather than a variance. So that was part of their request. The minute to the master plan also addresses the front of what's now Goya, right here. So if that portion of General Electric needs to be widened, the buffer can be reduced from 15 to 10 feet. This also applies over on Hermit Smith Road. Those are the significant changes to the master plan, other than some general driveway locations that had to be modified, repositioned because of the change in the, the lot sizes. With that, the changes primarily only address Lot 3 and 4. The remainder of the master plan are subject to the terms and conditions of the original master plan. Lots 3 and 4 are subject to the terms and conditions of both, where there are changes in this PUD, those will supersede for Lot 3 and 3 over the last amendment. It's a little bit confusing, but that's how it will apply. The, here you can see the lot area changes and the conditions of approval that are in your staff report. They will, in general, they, we modified condition number one, that for the future improvements to General Electric Road, the stormwater will be addressed at a different time. Okay, so that condition has been changed. They are required to do a development agreement to address transportation improvements. There is discussions occurring based on the traffic impact analysis, as well as other transportation needs to accommodate the Amazon operation with our transportation planner, Pam Richmond. That development agreement will be presented to city council at some point in the, in the hearing process. Other conditions is they'll be required to replat Lot 3 and 4. There is some right-of-way, if you go back to the plan here, that they will dedicate to the city. The pavement of Hermit Smith Road actually encroaches on their property, which is tract A, pond owned by the Property Owner Association, because there's wetlands over here. So over time and history, the road has occurred on their property. With that, those are the, the major changes and conditions of the master plan. The recommendation by DRC and the recommendation in your package is to find the amendment consistent with the Conference of Plan and approve the amendment to the Mid-Florida Logistics Park Plan Unit Development Master Plan based on the conditions of approval and the findings of fact presented in the staff report. Again, I'll address questions you may have. The applicant is here, and they may be able to address your questions as well.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. How far does Hermit Smith Road go before it turns private? I know we had, we had those issues in the past, and
Yeah.
the city didn't seem to know how far it went down.
If you know where the Bowen Brothers is and the northern driveway
Can you show me on the map?
of the Rayner Shine facility, it is, it would be somewhere, yeah, somewhere down here.
Somewhere down in there.
Yeah.
You don't know exactly where?
Yes, I know exactly where, but I don't have an air photo that I can show you that specifically shows where that, where that break occurs. Okay, so we have Hermit Smith down here.
Is this, is this where it ends here?
So it's going to be down here.
That's, that long, okay. Thank you. Okay.
But all the driveways to the Amazon facility access onto the public road portion, they all access onto the public road portion of Hermit Smith or General Electric or the internal spine road to the industrial park, which is called Shelby Industrial Drive.
I have a couple of questions. One, the same thing, Hermit Smith Road, Smith Road. Rayner is down there, as you know. Is that the public part of the road, or is that private?
Rayner Shine?
Rayner Shine.
That's a private area.
That's private.
Rayner Shine is a private area, but they have a northern driveway, and where that northern driveway is, is about the point where it changes from a private to a public road. That's why that, they purchased the property to the north of the operation to have that road bend up to north so it could connect to the public road section of Hermit Smith Road.
Okay. The real question is, when they do the traffic analysis, obviously, we know it's not
I've seen if our transportation planner was present.
Okay. There'll obviously be a lot of, a lot of traffic with the client's vehicles moving up and down General Electric. Have you thought about a stoplights or anything at the intersection of General Electric and is it Orange Street?
I, I can't answer that question. Pam is still working with the engineers and planners for the Amazon consultant, which is called Seafreed Properties. And I can tell you, there's been a traffic impact analysis that was prepared, and they're looking at what improvements will best serve both the city and the applicant from a, a transportation needs for, again, the Amazon and for the City of Apopka.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions of staff? All right, thank you, David. Does the petitioner have a presentation? And sir, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Jason Lewis, Kinley Horn, Associates, 116 South Kentucky Avenue, Lakeland, Florida. Don't really have a presentation. I just wanted to say, the staff has been great to work with, and if you have any questions, more than happy to answer those as well.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. And we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I move that we find the PUD master plan amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and recommend approval of the amendment to the Mid-Florida Logistics Park Plan Unit Development Master Plan based on the conditions of approval and findings and facts presented in the staff report for the property owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Warehouses, LTD, and the Mid-Florida Logistics Park Property Owners, Property Owner Association, generally located on the west side of State Road 429, south of General Electric Road, and east of Hermit, Hermit Smith Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
None.
Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find DFL 5, Apopka Last Mile Preliminary Development Plan, consistent with the 1993 Land Development Code, the Mid-Florida Logistics Park PD Master Plan and Comprehensive Plan, and recommend approval of the preliminary development plan subject to the conditions of approval and the findings of the staff report for the property owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Warehouses, Limited, and located at 2050 and 3150 Shelby Industrial Drive. We have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Bobby Howell, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. The applicant's requesting approval of a preliminary development plan for Lot 3 and a portion of Lot 4 of the Mid-Florida Logistics Park, which you've seen in the previous presentation. And this plan details the construction of 201,475 square-foot distribution facility for an e-commerce retailer where delivery vans will be dispatched from and stored on site. Vicinity map shows the location of the subject property. This is General Electric Road. This is Hermit Smith, and it dead ends down in that area where the Bowen Brothers property is. This is an aerial photograph showing the Mid-Florida Logistics Park under construction. Looks a little bit different today. Access to the site is located via two access points along General Electric Road, which is located here and here, and then two access points along Shelby Industrial Drive, which is here and here. A five-foot sidewalk will be constructed along both of the streets. A five-foot, five-foot wide strip of right-of-way will be dedicated along the property located along General Electric Road to help facilitate improvements that will be required to General Electric Road. Stormwater for the project will be directed to the master stormwater ponds that are located within the Mid-Florida Logistics Park. A total of 1,554 parking spaces will be provided at the project site, and these parking spaces will be broken up into employee parking, van storage spaces, van staging, van loading, and trailer box loading spaces. The landscape plan that is provided is consistent with the approved PUD master plan for Mid-Florida Logistics Park. The materials that were chosen are consistent with the materials that are allowed in the PUD master plan. Architectural elevations are consistent with the overall theme of the Logistics Park. This rendering that you see in front of you is consistent with the Goya building that's currently under construction on Lot 1. Development agreement is being drafted, which will primarily address surrounding roadway network improvements, and will be presented to the city council concurrent with the PD master plan amendment. There are five conditions of approval that are included in the staff report. For the sake of time, I'll read all of them to you very slowly. The DRC recommends approval subject to the conditions of approval, and staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions? We'd be happy to answer them. The applicant's here as well.
Okay, thanks. Any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Does the petitioner have a presentation? Okay, very good. Okay, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Well, I move to find DFL 5, Apopka Last Mile Preliminary Development Plan, consistent with the 1993 Land Development Code, the Mid-Florida Logistics Park PD Master Plan and Comprehensive Plan, and recommend approval, sorry, of the preliminary development plan subject to the conditions of approval and the findings of the staff report for the property owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Warehouses, Limited, and located at 2050 and 3150 Shelby Industrial Drive.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Oh, sir.
Second by Commissioner Guster. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Do we have any old business? Do we have? Yes.
Just wanted to let you know that next month, we will be presenting glitch amendments, number two, for the Land Development Code. We've got about 20 different corrections, additions, modifications, things like that, that are, you know, basically make the Land Development Code work a little bit easier for you, work better for us, but more importantly, to work better for the, the public that we serve.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Okay, any further old business? Any new business? There being no further business to come before the commission, will be adjourned. There being no further business to come before the commission, we'll be adjourned.
Good job.